That little button. Yep, you see the red light around the mic?
Yeah.
Oh.
Okay, great. Okay. Good evening. The July 1st, 2025 reorganizational meeting of the Rockville Center Board of Education is called to order. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I will now, the oath of office will now be administered to the board members. Board members, please raise your right hand and recite the oath of office as members of the Board of Education.
I, Kelly Barry, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties as trustee of the Board of Education of the Rockville Center Union Free School District according to the best of my ability.
Thank you. The oath of office will now be administered to the ex officio student board member, Callie Mann. Callie, can you please raise your right hand and recite the oath of office as the ex officio student board member?
I, Callie Mann, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties as ex officio student board member of the Rockville Center Union Free School District according to the best of my ability.
Thank you. Congratulations. Nominations will now be accepted for president. Are there any nominations for president?
I nominate Kelly Barry.
Are there any other nominations for president? There being no further nominations, I will call the vote. All in favor of Kelly Barry for president signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried unanimously. Congratulations, Mrs. Barry. Oath of office of president. Mrs. Barry, please raise your right hand and recite the oath of office.
I, Kelly Barry, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties as president of the Board of Education of the Rockville Center Union Free School District according to the best of my ability.
Thank you. I will now turn over the meeting to President Barry.
Thank you. May I have a nomination for vice president? I would like to nominate Dr. Downing. Are there any other further nominations? Seeing Dr. Downing. Can I motion?
Signify by saying aye.
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 Dr. Downing, please raise your right hand and repeat the oath.
I, Donna Downing, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties as vice president of the Board of Education of the Rockville Center Union Free School District according to the best of my ability.
Thank you. Aye.
Yep, you're up again.
May I have a nomination for secretary?
I nominate Janet Gruner.
Are there any other further nominations? There being no further nominations, I will call the vote. All in favor of Janet Gruner for secretary signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carried unanimously. Congratulations, Mrs. Gruner.
I'll administer Ms. Gruner's oath at a later time.
Okay, thank you. Audit, Mrs. Celeberty?
Yes. Yes. So, I need a motion to appoint the Board of Education as the audit committee for the 25-26 school year. May I have a second? Or may I have a motion first?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor of appointing the Board of Education as the audit committee signify by saying aye.
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 Great. Please raise your right hand as board members and recite the oath for the audit committee.
I, Kelly Barry, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties as a member of the audit committee of the Rockville Center Union Free School District according to the best of my ability.
Mr. Gavin, I will now swear you in as superintendent of schools. Please raise your right hand and take the oath of office.
I, Matthew Gavin, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties as superintendent of schools of the Rockville Center Union Free School District according to the best of my ability.
Thank you. Thank you.
I need a motion to appoint Mrs. Celeberty as the district clerk for the 2025-2026 school year. I'll make the motion. May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
I, Mary Lou Celeberty, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties as district clerk of the Rockville Center Union Free School District according to the best of my ability.
Thank you. May I have a motion to appoint Ms. Rinaldi as treasurer for the 2025-2026 school year? I'll make the motion. May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor of Ms. Rinaldi as treasurer signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ms. Rinaldi, please raise your right hand and recite the oath of office.
I, Carrie Rinaldi, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties as treasurer of the Rockville Center Union Free School District according to the best of my ability.
Thank you.
May I have a motion to appoint Ms. Rehack as deputy treasurer for the 2025-2026 school year? I'll make the motion. May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor of Ms. Rehack as deputy treasurer signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ms. Rehack, please raise your right hand and recite the oath of office.
I, Jacqueline Rehack, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties as deputy treasurer of the Rockville Center Union Free School District according to the best of my ability.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the remainder of the agenda? I'll make the motion. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
That brings an end to our reorganizational meeting, and now we will be moving right into our public work session.
Thank you, President Barry. I want to officially welcome Callie Mann, who joins us here tonight as our new student representative to the Board of Education. Callie, we are so glad that you are here. This board has long believed in the importance of elevating student voice, and we've made it a priority that our students are not only heard but are valued as partners in shaping the future of schools. We look forward to your insight, Callie, and your perspective that you bring throughout the year. We were just talking before, we know that we are in very good hands with our first student board member. Ms. Mann is poised, she is mature, and she's also a member of the field hockey team, which we are going through to go to varsity and continue to dominance, right? Didn't we talk about that?
Okay. So, thank you, Callie, for coming in and being a part of this and showing your leadership and really being a voice for other students as well. So, thank you. I also want to take a moment to publicly commend our administrators, teachers, and staff for the work they did in making all of our graduation and moving up ceremonies so meaningful. These events are important milestones for our students and families, and thanks to the dedication planning and dedication and planning that our staff put into each one, they were truly special moments. From our pre-K moving up to the high school, every ceremony reflects the values and spirit of the Rockville Center community. I'm also proud to share that our district has been awarded $2,000 from the Special Olympics Foundation, we just found out this morning, in recognition of our work launching the challenger basketball team this year. This is an acknowledgement of our commitment to inclusion and opportunity for all students. A special thank you to Ms. Dalton and Mr. McGuire and the dedicated teachers and staff who have supported this program from day one. And thank you, of course, to SEP for all they do to partner with us and to keep our focus on making sure that everyone has inclusive opportunities. So, for everyone, your efforts are not only, your efforts not only create an incredible experience for our students, but they also demonstrated the power of community and teamwork. And that, Madam President, is my quick summer report. Callie, that's as fast as I've ever gone. So, I usually have to buckle in for like a little bit, but this one's, this one's a reorg meeting, so you'll be fine.
Thank you, Mr. Gavin, and welcome, Callie. We're really thrilled to have you, and we can't wait to work with you in the year ahead. Turning to board committees, I'm going to ask board members to serve on the following committees of the board this upcoming year. The audit committee will be all of us, we just took that oath. Building visitation will be all of us as well. I will serve on the district-wide safety team. Finance, I would like to ask Dr. Downing if he can be on the finance committee, and Mrs. Hackett. Okay? And IEPs, Mrs. Messia and Mrs. Hackett. And RVC Ed Foundation liaison, Dr. Downing, can you continue on that as well? Policy will be Dr. Downing and Mrs. Gruner. And parent advisory Title I, Mrs. Messia, can you continue on that committee? Thank you. I think that's it, right? Wellness? Did I say wellness?
Wellness.
Sorry, Mrs. Messia, will you also do wellness? Thank you.
No, I'm sorry.
Mrs. Messia.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay. Turning to policies, currently at stage two, we have 5685 max temp for buildings and facilities. Dr. Downing, did you want to speak to this?
This was certainly a topic of conversation during the last heat wave. We have no significant changes since this was in stage one, and again, this is one that is coming down from New York State Governor's Office where we measure the temperature is spelled out for us. There is not a whole lot of negotiation in terms of the procedures here, but it spells out what happens when interior temperatures reach 82 degrees and then if they were to reach 88 degrees. Certain steps are taken, and I know that we have air conditioning available in all of our buildings, so if we need to move students and move instructional spaces to those air-conditioned locations, that is what we do.
Okay, thank you. Okay to move this to stage three at the next meeting?
Yep.
Okay. Seventy-three, seventeen, students' use of cell phones and other electronic devices to be renamed use of Internet-enabled devices during the school day. I know this has been something that we've been discussing and will continue to discuss. Dr. Downing, did you want to speak to this?
Yeah, this really, again, the only significant change is renaming it to let everyone know that it is not just a, we tend to shorten it and say the cellphone policy, but it is bigger than that, and I think it is important for families and students, especially at the high school level, to know that it also includes Internet-enabled laptops that are not distributed by the school. So, only school-issued Chromebooks are permitted under this new policy.
Thank you. Okay to move this next meeting?
Yep.
Okay, can I have a motion to approve items for Action E1 through H12?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everyone. Have a great summer.
Thank you.
Oh, can I motion to adjourn? Second.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Now, have a great summer.